Any more trouble, we'll call a meeting in order. Praise for the pleasure of all of you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzy, can you hold the roll?
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzmann.
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Here.
And Mayor Gore.
I am here. Item two, a motion to approve the design agenda will have the Parks and Rec Joint Meeting in the Senate.
I make the motion that we approve the agenda. Support.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor Gore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzmann.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen comment for items not on the agenda.
This is just a pretty beachy poll, 924 Riverside. This is just a public information. Senate Bill 477 was passed and went into effect with Governor Snyder signing it and will require drivers to slow to 10 miles per hour below the posted speed limit as well as yield their lane if possible when passing police or emergency vehicles on the side of the road. And the bill also includes roadside tow trucks, garbage trucks, maintenance and utility vehicles that have an amber light flashing. And again, being on the low lane power, just want to make sure the public knows that when our DPW, when they're out there working to slow down, you need to bylaw 10 miles an hour slower than the speed and if possible, over into the other lane. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else?
Christine here, Lowell, Michigan. I was here a couple meetings ago and missed the special meeting when you were going around regarding the dispensaries and recreation and a lot of the city. But I wanted to come back and make sure that you know now that things are going forward that I'm still willing to help in any way that you'd like me to help. I've been a Lowell lifer. I hope to someday be part of LLC and have a Class A growers license. So whatever I can do to research any of the other cities or municipalities that are thinking about what their options are or the laws they're going to put in place or any type of something that you may need. I have 38 years in a large corporation down the road. I've been an executive assistant there, vice president's for many years. And however I can help, I just want you to know that I'm here to help and I'd be glad to leave my phone number. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, those two old business items made the SAW grant.
For the past few years, Cryon Newhoff has been working on the city's behalf in developing our storm water asset management plan. They're here tonight to start beginning to present you information so you can start making sound planning for capital improvements that we'll need to make under the SAW grant. I met, Rich and I met with them two weeks ago and seen this for the first time or at least just seen the preliminary results for the first time. And it was actually pretty interesting. And I think, I thought it was important at this time for you guys, for council, to start seeing this so we can start. The time is coming now where we need to really now start putting plans together and starting to move forward trying to address these infrastructure issues. So I'm going to turn this over to Brian.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Again, Brian Villem with Cryon Newhoff. One of the thanks, Sue, ahead of time, she's going to help me flip through the slides here. So thank you very much, Sue. Appreciate that. If you recall, we've been working on the SAW program, which is a grant through the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to help do asset management for storm water and wastewater systems in the city. In the last two, well, year and a half, two years pretty much, we've been working on collecting all the data that we need to collect on locations, basically doing the inventory, what you have and where it's at, and then condition assessments. So looking up all the pipes, reviewing all the videos, rating all those systems. So as you know, we've been collecting all that information and as a, just as a note on the condition ratings, as I start to show you these maps, you'll see some colors on these maps. Really, when we look at condition ratings for pipes, which pretty much is really the primary thing that drives replacement needs in the system are pipe conditions, although we also have rated manholes as well, structures and catch basins, things like that. But the pipes tend to drive projects. We look at really these primary factors. So you look at things like root intrusions into pipes, flow blockages, wall corrosion, the wall condition, joint offsets and infiltration. So as we look at the videos for the pipes and we look up each pipe, we look at every one of those kind of conditions that we rate them. And then overall, we can do a combined rating for each pipe. So as I show you these maps that are coming up, you'll see that these pipes currently are rated 1 through 5. And these are just examples of what a 1 through 5 might look like. Again, depending on the type of material that the pipe is made out of, it has different failure modes. But generally speaking, you can see we go from a 1, which is a good pipe or a brand new pipe, to a 5, which we consider fail. Just for your information, this same type of information, we can present in like poster format for the public. So as we want to convey this kind of information to the public, we can put, we've developed a public information program that all this can be incorporated into, can also be put up on the city website. So it makes it really easy and accessible for everybody. So as we look at these maps, you look at these, and these are just additional examples of what some of these pipe ratings look like. You can see, you know, I said a 1 was a brand new pipe. These are examples of 2s where we have different material types and you have, again, different failure modes. That bottom right-hand side is a clay pipe, which is really most of the sanitary sewer system. That's anything prior to 1980 is usually clay. Other things are PVC. And the storm system is mostly concrete. And one thing we've noticed, just municipal systems as a whole, is you know that the sanitary sewer system is generally under a little more stress than the storm sewer system. It's always wetter. It's always got different kinds of flows going through it than just storm water. So it's under more stress and so we tend to see more dramatic failures oftentimes in the sanitary system. So Suzy, if you could. So these are examples of 3s. Very typically, you start seeing things like joint failures occur, a lot more offsets in pipes, you know, between a pipe segment, you get a shift in the pipe, so you get a misalignment. Sometimes even though the individual pipe segments may kind of line up together, when you look down a run, like in that upper left picture, you start to see where the pipes start to move around and you get sweeps and you don't have nice straight lines. And that's really difficult and problematic for flow as well. So that's another condition. 4s, you can imagine things are starting to get worse. We start to see corrosion on some pipes, if they're metal pipes. In the clay pipes, we often see a lot more joint failures. We start to see pipes starting to crack. Concrete pipe, which is really not good to have in a sanitary system usually because concrete gets attacked by the hydrogen sulfide in sanitary sewers. So we see a lot of those failures. And then of course, if you go into the last one, the 5s, we start to see really serious failures occurring. Major root blockages, major joint offsets, things like that. So that's generally the rating system that we have is 1 through 5 primarily. And again, there's many different reasons why something might be a 1 through 5. So this map, when we zoom in on this, this is the storm system, I believe. Is this one, Sue? Yeah, I'll have to find a spot to zoom in on too. But what we did is we create a map where this, this is really the rating system on the storm sewer. And really what we're looking for is when you look at colors here, the lighter something is, probably the better the condition, the darker something is, is what we want to worry about. So as we get towards certain areas, you can see there's little spots that are maybe darker than others. And those are storm sewers we want to focus on and have concerns about. Now again, what we'll do is we go in-depth and look at every single video, see why is something a rating that it is. So some of these may turn into spot repairs rather than a full pipe replacement. But just to let you know, generally speaking, the storm system's in pretty good shape. With storms, we tend to notice more issues with castings and manholes and catch basins than we do with pipes generally. And things like castings being broken, some being full of debris, those kinds of things that we see. So if you want to hit the next one, Suzy, go to the next slide.
That's all I have here.
Yep.
Go to the...
Next slide on this one. There should, there should be another page. Have you hit the down arrow next to the number 7 up at the top?
Page 8.
Right there, yep, page 8. So these are pipes that were from your water reliability study. We did not do that study, but I think Williams &amp; Works did that one. And these were water mains that they had identified were in need of replacement for one reason or another. They could be undersized, they might be four-inch mains that need replaced, they might be due to age or break history. But the reason that we want to show this is because as you'll see, we'll start layering things. So you saw a, the risk of failure map for the storm sewer. This is water mains that need to be replaced. The next slide, if you hit that one, Sue, that next one will show the Pacer rating system, which is the roadway rating system. So again, the darker the color, the more need that road is of some type of resurfacing. So as you can see, we're looking and building up layers of assets that share space, right? They share that right-of-way. So now we'll continue on with the individual maps. Yes?
Brian, you had a question. It shows north and south Hudson, so this is a little bit dated because those are new roads.
Some of those we have, we have, we did modify, I think, the Broadway number, but I think we need to talk to you to give you the most updated. So before we start doing capital project proposals, we'll get the latest and greatest from Dave. Yep?
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you for that comment. And again, please, I know I'm going a little quickly, I just want to be respectful of your time, but if there's anything you have a question on or want me to expand on, please just let me know. This is green sanitary sewer. Now, we haven't shown all the ratings. You don't see five different shades of green. What we've done is left on the 4s and 5s that we've highlighted here. So basically, the two worst condition ratings yet. Now, this looks pretty dramatic. It looks like there's a lot of pipe that needs to be replaced. The truth is, this is the first rating run-through. And I purposely show this because if we flip to the next slide... Yep? You'll see that now we've got pipe segments, there's fewer large green lines, and we're going to start narrowing down what pipes need to be worked on and the order that they need to be worked on. So we've basically taken the previous map you saw with several different shades of green on it, narrowed it down to the most critical ones. And now I think the next one we have, Sue, will show another modification of that where we've looked at every one of those pipes individually. And you see now a lot of what were green lines have changed into green dots. And so that means that we've looked at those pipes and said, you know what? That pipe got rated a 5, let's say, but it got rated because of a very specific defect at one location, and we can fix those with the spot repairs rather than have to replace the whole pipe. So what we're doing is continually then refining what that condition rating is and what the action is that's needed to economize as best we can what those repairs need to be. And so this is really good news in fact, this map, because it shows that a lot of those things that were shown as a pipe defect, we can narrow down to one spot and deal with it much more efficiently and economically. Then we take all those and we layer them all on top. So you can see there's the reds and oranges from the road stuff came back, there's some thin blue lines in there for water mains, there's some green spots and green lines in there from the sanitary sewer, there's also some purple in there that's a little bit harder to see for the storm. So even on this kind of a map, it gets very busy, it's kind of difficult to see, you can start seeing very, obviously where projects are needed, things where we combine efforts. So for instance, on, you know, on Washington, we got places where the road needs replacement, the sanitary needs some work, and the water main needs some work. All those things come together. So now we start figuring out, okay, where are projects that we can economize effort and be the most efficient? So this is kind of the core of asset management planning. So it really is that idea of, okay, maybe we want to do a street right now, but maybe because of budgeting purposes, we, the sanitary fund or the water fund can't handle it for either next year or two years from now. But you know, you can plan together, so there's a reason to maybe wait on a road replacement till when it times correctly with sewer or water replacements. So again, the whole idea is to make the most efficient use of tax paid dollars that we can. Any questions about those maps so far? I know they're pretty fast. It's a little hard to see the quick big picture.
A lot of this information was gathered from the smoke test you did and then actually go down with a camera and looking?
Correct. Yep, so whenever, for these ratings, for the pipe ratings, those really are resulted from the zoom camera work that we did and the full inline televising. What happened was when we ran into a pipe where we either couldn't see very far down with the zoom camera or we noted a severe defect, then we lined up the inline television camera and they ran the full length inside. Again, it was a, the zoom camera was a great way to triage the pipes and eliminate the ones that we thought, okay, they're in decent condition, but ones that we had question on, we sent the full inline through, so we had a good picture of all the way up and down the pipe. Yep, so again, it's that idea of trying to be as efficient as possible and get the best data out of it. Yep. So these, these maps get kind of busy, but then our next step is starting to identify what potential projects are. Now remember, the ultimate goal here for us is to work with you guys to get to a 10-year capital improvement plan. And one that again is the most efficient way of balancing fund balances and getting repairs done that are needed. You mentioned the smoke testing that we did. That identified a lot of things that, Rich has a list right now of what I guess we'll call low-hanging fruit from that perspective, where we have clean-out covers that we're missing, but when those are gone and they're in a paved area, rainwater can pour in there and cause spikes down at the wastewater plant. So there's a list of things that we can get to now that are, I guess relatively inexpensive to fix, but may have some really nice positive impacts on flows at the wastewater plant. So that came about as well. One thing I don't have up here, because it gets a little confusing trying to explain it, but if you remember, we did a whole lot of soil warnings on the west side of the Valley Vista neighborhood, trying to identify where exactly the water table was and why it was where it was at. And as you know, the water table changes pretty quickly in that neighborhood. And we've got some really good information now on what's happening there with the different sand layers and the clay layers that are in that neighborhood. And we have some ideas on ways we might be able to deal with lowering the groundwater over there. So it gets a little complicated to explain with the different clay layers, but I think actually there was some work done before where there was the trench in, I guess, French drain that was put in behind the homes just south of where the ball fields were, that actually did help relieve some of the groundwater in that area. We might have an opportunity to do some more of that. We're just trying to figure out the best spot with the most likelihood of success to do that. So that's all come about with the SAW as well. So any questions on that piece of it?
You said that this is a possible 10-year plan. Can we wait 10 years for this or is it really needs to be addressed before the 10-year plan?
Well, the, what the 10-year plan is, it will really lay out a series of projects each year for a 10-year period. And it'll look at, and I'll show that to you in just a second, the spreadsheet. What it'll do is identify capital needs for both the sewer fund, the water fund, and the street fund as well. And so that's where that all has to get balanced on what's available and what you guys frankly want to spend. You know, I'll use an example, you know, we tell, look at the Pacer ratings and you think, oh my gosh, sick of all these bad streets. But the truth is, is yes, some of them are bad, but you also get to actively make a decision about what level of service you want to provide in the streets. You choose. And so if a neighborhood road is okay to be in a little bit of a worse condition than another road, you make that choice. So this capital plan isn't us coming up with projects for you. We'll of course do that as a first set of recommendations, but you guys are in full control over what you decide needs to be in each year of that capital plan. Because we aren't at that stage yet as far as listing projects, let's go to the first that map first, Sue. That one. I brought an example. This was City of Greenville. And as you can see, it's got a lot of those same things. There's lines and there's dots. If you pull that map a little bit to the right, to the legend... Yep, keep going. You'll see what we have here is capital projects. So this particular map, and you'll end up with a map just like this of project areas, and then they'll be colored by year of when we really want those projects to fall. And they'll differentiate between a full reconstruct project or a water project or spot repairs. So you'll end up with a capital improvement plan that looks like this in the end. Now, before that, we'll propose a layout for a 10-year period, and then we'll be sitting with Mike and Rich and going over that at first and seeing what we can balance. Of course, with Dick as well, financial, you know, council, looking at rates and all those things, we have to factor all those things in, but that will be part of the process over the next few months here. So this, again, this is an example of what you end up with once you decide what projects you really want and what order you want them in. So if you flip to that spreadsheet, Sue. Thank you. This is really a spreadsheet for us to develop the capital improvement plan. So if you see on the bottom, there are tabs for every year. And what happens here is on each tab, there are columns that we can set up for projects. And we can have as many projects in a given year as we want. But what it does is if you, there are items on the left-hand side, so we can decide in a given project, is are there water main items, are there storm sewer items, there's more items for sanitary. We basically use this to develop a project cost, you know, roadway costs that are associated with it, things like that. And what this does is each set of columns for a project helps then identify, whoops, I'm going to slip your stick up right there. If you look in the center there, it shows what the funding sources are. In this case, we've got sanitary, water, storm and road fund. Now, I know you guys don't have a separate storm fund. You can at some point, if you want, set up a dedicated storm water utility. That's possible to do. And, you know, of course, Dick would be involved in that because, you know, there's, it has to deal with how to charge people. It's similar to a drain process where people are apportioned based on runoff they create, but that can be done. So the spreadsheet is set up that if you wanted to do that, you can have those storm funds or storm dollars come out of a storm fund. If not for now, what it means is it comes out of the street fund is all. Okay? But it is, it's set up for future use that way. What this spreadsheet allows us to do is as we set up projects in a given year, we'll sit, of course, with Mike and Rich and decide, okay, does this make sense? You know, and Dick will be involved in that from a financial perspective. Do each of these years make sense for spending? And if something needs to move, we can just copy and paste it and move it to a different part of the spreadsheet. Okay? If you go to the summary tab, let's see, on the far right-hand side of that list, right, move it left. Right there. What the end of the spreadsheet does is it tallies those things. So if you can see on the left are years, so 2020 through 2029, and then each of the funding sources. So as we move projects from year to year and move them around, this summary page kind of keeps track of what needs to come out of each funding source each year. And again, this gets massaged until it does what you guys want it to do. So it's relatively straightforward process. It just takes some time to grind through all the data. But what you can be assured of is that once we're done with all this, that you have a very objective look at the system. That's really what it does. And this is relatively straightforward to communicate to residents as well. So all these maps, you know, are pretty simple. They're five-color maps. It shows the risk of failure of each of the systems, the road, the sanitary, and the storm. Water is just from the water reliability study. And again, then you overlay them, and project areas are pretty evident.
You're still early spring or late spring, early summer for a completed...
Yep, we're ready. Actually, we're, we're still, we're finding that map as we speak. We're still working on that now, making sure that we get all the spot repairs identified. So we'll be sitting with Mike and Rich right after New Year and with our first draft of the CIP. Yep. And again, it's a first draft. It's, you know, you guys make it what you want to make it. That's, our job is to help you do that.
Does it also break any maintenance that's going to curl over that course of time in these lines too? So when we put our budget together, Rich and I know what that cost looks like too? Like I'm quite sure this year Jefferson now has been put down for two years. I'm quite sure there's some summer maintenance that needs to be put down to keep it rolling and good. So I don't know if it's, have it been put into this or comes down just to general fund?
Yeah, and what we'll do is recurring costs will go into that, into the CIP as well. And O and M dollars, if you want to show up in that end summary, yes, we'll add that in. I mean, a good, for instance, is that post-SAW, so when SAW is done, we recommend to everybody that you televise, re-televise a tenth of your sanitary system every year on a rolling basis. So that means in a given 10-year period, you'll have seen every piece of the pipe again. And that's generally what we would expect, the time duration to be for potential change in a pipe. So once you get on that rolling cycle now, you'll be looking at a tenth of your system every year. That cost also goes into the CIP on an annual basis. Same thing for costs at the wastewater plant and/or things at the water plant, all those will get plugged into here. Yep, so it's a, it's a living, breathing tool. It takes a lot of effort to start that, but once we get that 10-year window squared away, and again, timing of any given project may depend upon a funding source. There may be a grant that we get for something, or plan on an MDOT grant or transportation grant, so we can decide when that needs to be based on the timing of those grant dollars. Once that's all set, it's not a huge effort anymore to keep it up because now you've done a really intensive look for the 10 years. Theoretically, then as you chop off a year and get it done, you just add another set of projects onto the backend. And you can always shift and adjust priority. There's always emergencies and things that come up. We can't prevent those. But this basis gives you a really nice, long, a good 10-year window. And the nice part about it is then for sewer and water rates and also for road fund, it prevents the unanticipated year-to-year spikes and drops that oftentimes you see without that planning.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Sue. I know we flashed through the maps very quickly, but again, all those are available. If you want to look more in-depth at them, please give us a call anytime if you have questions.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B is the city income tax.
At our last meeting, Mitch Bean and Bob Klein were here and they presented you the findings from the report. And I just felt it was important to continue the conversation as to where we want to, where we want to go with this. The report really, I mean, the report kind of indicated some things that I thought were pretty impressive. Based on their, really their conservative approach, if this was to be put in front of the voters and voted in front of the people, you're looking at approximately about $1,200 in new revenue through the, through the tax. And one thing you have to remember with that is what would be proposed is if you were to reduce the property milit rate by four mils, that's $400,000 to the general fund, $80,000 to the, to the, to the DDA fund. And if you, if you implemented it and reduced the milit rate by that, the, in essence, the, 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 the income tax would, would take into account that $480,000. It would, you would have, you would want to take that money first to basically replenish the general fund. Because even though you're reducing the revenue by $400,000 out of the, out of the general fund, those expenditures don't go away. You still have, you still have to, I mean, for all the things that come out of the general fund, police, fire, DPW, parks, cemeteries, city hall, facilities, all of those, all of those things come out of the general fund. And we're, we're really at the point right now where if we wanted to, unless we want to really consider diminishing services, there's really, really not much you can cut. And you also have to remember too, is every year, we obviously have increased personnel costs. We're going to see significant increases to MERS contributions every year because of the unfunded liability. So that's anywhere between $25,000 to $40,000, where 70% of that's going to be covered under the general fund. Now, one of the things that I'm actually looking at when I present you your budget next year is I'd like to actually have the DDA pick up a larger component of the bond for this building. The DDA's seen some significant gains to where I think that's possible. So that might free up $100,000, $150,000 every year in bond payments. And we're contributing now roughly, this year I think we contributed about $125,000 to the local street funds out of the general fund. So now you have $225,000 there. But you also have to remember that every year, we're going to have these incremental costs that especially with the pensions, really going to chip at that. The, the, the other thing, the other thing to consider too is we are seeing an increase into our Act 51. Currently, this fiscal year, 200, through the, through the gas tax dollars, the city will see about $269,000 come into the, to the major street fund, which is only roughly six miles of city street, where the local streets, which is roughly about close to 14 miles of streets, of streets, will see about $100,000 in that Act 51 fund. So the way the formula is designed is the majority of the funds go to your major streets and not as much to your local streets. But 85% of your local streets are being poor. And in a 10-year plan, in a 10-year plan, under the road asset management... And in a 10-year plan, in a 10-year plan, under the road estimate management plan, if you were to put $1 million a year for the next 10 years, you would have to put, you would, that'd be, that would get you from 85% poor to 92% good. And so basically what that tells you is that's just $10 million, just in road construction costs. That doesn't include engineering, which add another 20% to that. So now that 10 million is probably 12 million. Incrementally, you know, $200,000, $300,000 more a year, it doesn't put a lot, it doesn't put a big dent into what you need to do. So how do you pay for that? The way, really, it's going to be very difficult to try and address these issues without new revenue. From where we sit, unless you want to start diminishing services, which you could do, the first one would have to be your largest, you would have to look at what your largest expense is. Your largest expense in your budget is police. That's roughly $800, $900,000 a year, which is going to always incrementally go up every year. So, but does the community want that? That's, that's a question you really have to, you really have to, you really have to ask. The other thing is, is, okay, you could go for a bond for this. You could go seek a bond just for the streets. For a $10 million bond in front of the people, if you were to, if you were to float that bond on a 15-year, on a 15-year millage, it's 8.5 mills. So that's just for 15 years. If you reduce that to a 10-year millage, it's a 12-mill. So it's 12 mills, an additional 12 mills. That'll get you $10 million. That'll get your, that'll get your streets, that'll get your streets, but at what cost? I mean, it's, that's, we're paying, we're 15.7 mills now. Granted, we generate $99,000 a mill, where in comparison to many communities in Kent County, that's on the lower end, but it's still a significant amount of money. What's being presented in front of you is, I mean, something to strongly consider is, at least with the, with the city income tax, you could probably designate somewhere between $600,000 to $700,000 a year that you could dedicate to streets. Maybe you only have the city income tax for 10 years, maybe you have it for 15 years. But you could, you could, you could, you know, you could consider that. That's something you consider where in actuality, if the resident is seeing a four-mill reduction, you could probably even go five mills. And you still probably get $600, $700,000 a year because you still have to remember that you're going to have, from what the study found, you're actually going to have more non-residents paying into it. There's going to be more money from the non-resident paying than there actually is the resident. Plus, the resident, really, if you look at, if you look at those, at those numbers, if the resident's component is roughly, I want to say like $600,000, you have to remember that $400,000 of that roughly is basically, basically a shift. They've been paying that already. So really, when you think about it, the resident itself, the resident is only really paying about, I mean, all of the residents combined, you're looking at maybe $150,000, $200,000 more a year throughout the city. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not making any recommendations at this point, but these are, these are true. I mean, now you're starting to see, and you're going to see real, real quick with the saw, what's, what these costs are going to be. And none of them, I mean, none of them are pleasant, I get it, but the, the community's really going to have to decide at some point how we want to address this. That's where I start.
Mike, your $10 million number plus $2 million for engineering, that doesn't include any infrastructure, or does it?
That is streets. That is just streets. That doesn't do anything with the...
Correct.
That doesn't do anything with the under. And we haven't, we haven't fully gotten those, you know, numbers yet through saw as to what that's going to be, how you're going to pay for that.
I'm surprised, Brian. I think things are in better shape than we thought they were from looking at your report.
Yeah, a lot of the utilities are in decent shape.
There's silver lining for us. I think the income tax is going to be a tough sell. The voters have to approve it. I bet it'd go down 70 to 30. If we can show that it shifts some of the costs to non-residents that are using the roads and will benefit from the improved roads, that's going to be a tough thing. Did they give us any prediction on the chances of that passing?
Well, one community in the last, in the last 25 years, two communities in the last year have approved it. City of East Lansing, City of Baton Harbor. In the last 25 years, you haven't had a city income tax pass. What you've seen though across the state is you've seen a number of communities, we're no different than any community in any city in Michigan. Every city has these issues. And what you're seeing in a lot of communities is they are approving millages. They're approving five mills, seven mills. It's across the board. Some, some communities only have two mills, but you have to remember, some of these communities, I mean, you have to look at how much you generate per mill.
You also have to look at, a lot of these communities are starting lower than we're already at, right? We're up there.
I don't think so. I think we're all pretty much, I mean, a lot of these communities are pretty, I mean, if you go to a lot, I mean, I've been through a lot of cities, and if you drive through a lot of these neighborhoods, they're not much different than ours.
I'm talking about millage.
Millage. We're the second highest in Kent County.
Yeah, we're the second highest.
We're the second highest millage, but we're also one of the lowest valued communities in Kent County. I mean, you look at, if you look at dollars per mill, Rockford's about $202,000 a mill. And I'm just talking cities, I'm not talking the townships. Cedar Springs is about $74,000 a mill. Felding's around 100, that, they're not in our county. We're at 99. So it's based on property value. So understanding that the values maybe in this community are as high as other communities, it's, that does, that does, obviously, community, what you find is communities with lower values like this tend to have higher millage rates.
It's a trade-off.
Correct.
You pay less. When taxes are high, it lowers that.
Right. But these are, I mean, these are, I hate to say it, but you're basically kind of picking between death and dismemberment going forwards because you have to, you have to, you have, I mean, or, the other option is, is you may just have to start turning some of these streets to gravel. I mean, because some of them are at that point now, we're...
That didn't go so well on North Washington Street.
Yeah.
And maybe there wasn't enough base there to work with. If we just keep on doing, I mean, we are seeing some significant investments in the community. Our tax dollars will increase.
Well, here's the thing. A lot of the investment you're seeing, it's going to the DDA because they're in the DDA district. And the DDA can only make facilities, you know, they can only improve streets that are actually in the DDA district. So a lot of the, a lot of the investment, a lot of, the reason you're seeing, a lot of the things you're seeing is because of the investment in the DDA district. Obviously, we've had some, you know, we've had some expansions with King Milling, with Lighthouse. Obviously, if this, if the project here comes to fruition, that would be significant. You're seeing other downtown improvements. Granted, the Highland Hills situation, I think, with them being developed, I think that stabilized the general fund quite a bit from what would have had it had we, had when the economy went south. That's helping, but you also have to remember that a lot of that, a lot of that, like, especially with the residential, you have a total implications where property values can only increase rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is less. So all of these things play a role. We'll see incremental, we'll see incremental increases in property value. I mean, even, I think they even in the report, they shed, they said over a 10-year period, just on property tax alone, we see about a $212,000 increase where with the city income tax, it's like $712,000. So you'll see some, but does it get us to where we want to go? I don't know. Going back to the, to the, to the Act 51, obviously, a couple of years ago, they, they increased the gas tax. The first thing that happened was a lot of the bonds that MDOT had, that gas tax went to pay that. Then it went to go to the state system. And now it's starting to trickle. We're, we should see $200,000 more in that five-year period, but it doesn't get us there to where I think we need to be.
Well, you know, so it'll balance out in the increase in labor costs and material.
That's all going to go up. Construction costs have gone way up in the last few years as well. And so, I mean...
Ultimately, the voters will decide.
Correct.
And the one thing, if we do see increases in the DDA district, we can do some creative things, like you talked about, helping with city hall payments. We can move some money around different ways. I think we have to do a decrease in property taxes to make it, or palatable. And then it does, it spreads it around to non-residents that are using our roads and contributing to the wear and tear. But we'll just have to see, probably voters. Any idea what it costs us to put that on the ballot? Is that a few thousand or...
Probably minimal. I mean, we can do an informational campaign, but we just can't do a, we can't, obviously, we can't, we can't take a position on it.
Right.
But I mean, we're not at that, we're not even at that point yet because until everything comes back with saw, that's really when we start thinking about putting plans in place. But I was asked a year and a half ago to start thinking about this. Now we're here.
Yeah, but it takes time for this stuff to happen where we need to start working on it.
Right.
So what election would we be looking at this?
2019.
Could, might be, maybe 19's not quick enough, might be 20. I don't know. I mean, if we can have everything in place, I'd like to have, I would like, I mean, I'd like to have ample time. I mean, I think you'd want to have six months of education before people voted on it, in my opinion. I think the longer you have, I mean, one of the things I've seen happen is especially for road millages, I've seen road millages go down because they didn't give ample time to educate. They basically, they, they put it on the ballot in August, they voted on it, it fails. I would, I'd be cautious about that. I would say...
I think 2019's a rush.
I'm, I'm getting, you know, being, I'm a little concerned. I thought I was pushing towards 19. I'm a little concerned about that. But the fact of the matter is, it's going to be very hard. You might be able to do one street, especially with $200,000, $300,000. We have, you know, we have over 20 miles of streets that we maintain. That doesn't do us a lot. And if, if we had the money, we would already fix the roads. And I guess it's really a question of priorities, but we want to live within our means and we have to cut something. What do we want to cut?
I understand the urgency of getting it due, but if we wait to 2020 and then it's passed, and it's 2021 before you're seeing any fruits of the labor and you collected and next thing you know, it's 2022 and we've done absolutely nothing to help that other than $200,000, so...
Yeah. Considering the priority that it's been, you know, I'd like to see, let's try to get it on 2019 if we can.
But I, I want to make sure it's educated. I would look at wholly open forms of the public to come in and do any things, things outside that. Do you want it at the high school or get as many as you can in education? This is my opinion.
Would you, would you put it as an either-or type thing? You could do the, is that, is that what you would be putting in front of the voters? You could present an income tax or a street millage? Or is that not...
I don't know if you can legally do that, Dick.
Well, I don't think it means on the ballot. I think it means when you're educating.
Oh, when you're, yeah, yeah, you could. I think if...
You wouldn't have enough time to do that by 2019, would you? Two different things. I'm just sitting here thinking, what would people be more receptive to?
I, I think at the end of the day, look, look at, you know, look at your home values and what you're paying right now with 15.7 mills, add eight mills, add eight mills to that for 15 years. I mean, I know what mine is, and mine's probably, I mean, I know, I know how much eight additional mills to me is. I mean, I pay, I pay the city myself just $1,900 on our millage rate now. That's not fit, so add another half, that's another, for me, that's another $900 a year. That's for 15 years.
Typically do it for 15 years.
Right. Well, you can do 10 or 15. Usually they're 10, but, but you're looking, if you do it a 10-year, it's 12 mills. So now...
One comment as a follow-up to that. One thing that you can do though is, is you can say that the income tax will only take effect if at the same time, there's a reduction in the property taxes. So like, one can be contingent on the other. And the other thing that you can do, which some communities have done, is, is say that the, a certain percentage or all of the funds raised from the income tax will be used for specific purposes. So you can dedicate it and tell the voters that it will be for only that specific purpose that they approve.
I don't think about either one of those things. It stands...
Yeah, right. No, we have to say, here's what you're going to be reduced.
To your point that you made earlier, that the yin and the yang here is that property owners only pay property taxes, and a good percentage of those property owners are retirees, so they don't have income, income taxes not applied to social security. And so there is that segment that likely would be in favor of an income tax. So if you think of it sort of that way also, it's a possibility.
Those voting in favor wouldn't feel a pinch.
Well, I think you got to keep working at as many options as you can. If there was an easy fix, I think it would already be done.
It's in your top, like, I have additional $900. I'm top of the $900.
All right. Well, any other questions for Mike or comments or ideas or anybody want to cut a check? All right.
I'll bring more, I'll, I'll keep feeding you information.
Item C, 2560 Bose Road Link.
Back in November, we presented the 2560 Bose RFP. We received two bids. One was from Lowell Township for $20,555, and the other one was from, for Gen's Broadband. At the time, we, we, we had to hold a resolution for 20 days per the, per the city charter because it was a sale of property. But at the time, we also discussed that the issue we were facing with the, with the property was that Lowell Township, had they bought it, would make the property tax exempt. For Gen's Broadband, while they were a lesser price, would have, they would have used it for, for commercial purpose, which would have made it taxable. So through the process, Lowell Township and Virgin, Virgin and Broadband worked something out to where it's really a win-win for everyone. Lowell Township needs the property for their park. They can take a portion of that, and they can, and it's only like a four-tenth of an acre. So if they can take a portion of that for, they can lease it to Virgin's Broadband, that property could then become taxable, which would bring us some additional revenue. It's not a lot of revenue, it might be somewhere between $1,000, $2,000 a year, but anything helps. So we worked, we've, we've discussed those things. At the last meeting, everyone was supportive of it. However, because of the fact that we had to, because of the charter provisions, had to sit on the agenda for 20 days and then couldn't approve it at the last council meeting because we didn't have a full quorum. We didn't have, you need four votes to, to approve city by the sale of city property. So tonight would be the first night you actually have a full council that you could vote on this. So one of the things too is what we would do is the money that comes in, we would set that aside so we could put towards future retired healthcare, so that we can, we can budget the cost and then, we can budget the cost and start possibly paying for it because we are going to have a number of retirements here that we're going to have to subsidize retired healthcare for five years for those employees. So I'm recommending that Lowell City Council approve Resolution 3318.